Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of June 11th, 2024. This meeting is being held in our hearing room at One Center Street on the ninth floor, and it is also being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. And we are going to resume this afternoon with our public meeting item number one. And I will turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation, to take us through the agendas this afternoon.
Thank you, Sarah. As stated, starting with public meeting item number one, that's LPC 24-08399, An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 231, lot 1. 301 Canal Street, AKA 419 to 421 Broadway, and also 423 Broadway. A taxpayer-built in 1955, a restaurant shop and a modified federal-style store and dwelling built in 1822 to 23. The application is to demolish two of the buildings and construct a new building at the corner, and to construct and addition install a storefront and signage and modify a fire escape at 423 Broadway. This was last presented at the public hearing of May 7th, 2024. No action was taken at that time. The applicants will present their revisions to the proposal after we open the proceedings.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do that now. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Still moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the applicants may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners Erin Ruley, Higgins, Quaysbarth, and Partners. We are back today to present the revisions to 419 and 423 Broadway. And so we'll start here. At the public hearing, you were supportive of the overall proposal, which included reconstruction of the existing buildings at 301 Canal and 419 and 421 Canal Street in, with a contemporary new design by Morris Ajmi. And the design is an abstraction or an interpretation of the cast iron bases that we see throughout the district. In addition, there were modifications proposed to 423 Broadway, which is the modified federal period building to the right. That included new storefront, a fully restored facade, connecting the buildings on the interior for a unified commercial space, and then a rear yard extension that we see at the rear here. Your comments were primarily focused on the scale and proportion of the one-story building and its storefronts and signage. In response, as you can see on the right, we've made a number of revisions. These are primarily dimensional changes to every aspect of the building itself, as well as modifying the detailing and articulation of the storefronts. And I think, as you can see by this comparison, that the changes result in a much better proportioned and scaled building that fits more comfortably into the streetscape and the district at large. And we certainly hope you agree. So I think at this point, Morris is going to take you through sort of the overall moves we made. And then Christopher Courtney from Morris's practice will take us through the specifics. And then we'll have questions at the end. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Carroll, Commissioners and staff. Morris Ajmi. Christopher Courtney is going to take us through some of the details, but I'll just give a brief overview. We have the before model, which is going around first, and revised model. But if not, we'll put it back together. I think the process always seems to work very well in that it gets us to the right place in terms of this project and all the projects, because we just have the additional time to refine and rethink some of the things that we've done. In general, we've, as Erin mentioned, adjusted every dimension. A couple of other things I just want to point out, and actually, let me go back. We did make two changes on the federal building, 423 Broadway. We exchanged the two pieces of storefront glass to one single piece, which you'll see in the later drawings. We also adjusted the metal color, which we feel still accentuates the existing brick and roof line, but in a more sympathetic way and allows the new corner building, or the reskin corner building, to have its own identity. And then here, you can see all the dimensions were changed. We also modified the railing, which we're still appealing to FDNY, to see if we can eliminate that. But we modeled that after the pattern on the freeze that you see there. The signage got reduced in height. We introduced two mullions on the glazing. Christopher will take us through all the dimensions. And the column increased, and I think the reduction in height and the increase in scale really helped the proportions there. Christopher?
Good afternoon, Christopher Courtney with Morris Ajmi Architects. I'm just going to run you through the dimensions. Morris kind of kick this off, Erin kick this off. On this slide, I think there's a few things that are worth pointing out as far as overall dimensions. The windows, previously the glazing itself was 13'2", which you can see here, and that has been reduced to 12'6", so it's come down a little bit. As Morris mentioned, we introduced a sort of ABA pattern to the glazing itself, so it gives a little bit more historical character and just brings down the scale in general. The, this is a good slide also to see the, both the sign band and the sign height have been reduced between both of these. The signage on the 419 has been reduced to 1'8", as well as on 423, so that they read as the same height throughout. Small little detail above the signage band, that has been increased, actually, so now all the way around that condition, it's sort of equal, equal, equal. So we just took that opportunity to fix that. And then also, as Morris mentioned, we increased this to a single pane of glass. It's sort of more of a resolution that we were able to do. Gives a little bit more historical feel. I'll point out later, but the mullion here was the same as the mullion here. It was a sort of hidden mullion, so now it's a true just single piece of glass, which is what we're able to do there. Here, we're kind of looking at the same thing, but on the left side of the screen, you can see Canal Street, so it's very similar, obviously, in terms of what we're looking at. Maybe one thing to point out is just the width of the glazing on both of these facades. And the previous version, the glazing itself width was 15'1", and it's been reduced to 14'6", and on Canal Street, 16'4 down to 15'11. Otherwise, everything's fairly similar here. This slide is looking at the railing, the introduction, just have some texture on that railing. As Morris mentioned, we're looking to get a variance from FDNY to fully remove the railing in this condition. If it is to remain, we thought it needed to have a little bit more detail than what we showed last time, so we introduced a little bit more context or some detail there. Otherwise, it's a good indication here as well to see that sliver of structural silicone glazing that was sort of hiding there. And now that's been expressed as an actual detailed express mullion. On this side, we're mostly looking at the intumature section. You can see the overall height change, so we've reduced overall by 1'5". Here's that little sliver that we increased a little bit. And then, again, just the reduction of the overall height of the signage band and the signage itself. Some plan details, just kind of working through the same ideas. The two bay glazing has been increased to three bays, so it's three foot on either side with an eight-foot section in between. That's on Broadway. On the Canal Street, it would be about nine feet and change for that center bay. The column itself grew, as Morris mentioned. Since it's tapered, we grew the upper part by two inches and the lower part by four inches. And here on the right, you can kind of see the introduction of that detail for the mullions that are expressed themselves. This sheet is to talk about the change and finish on the extension. So there was a comment by one of the Commissioners. This is more of a design change than an exact response to a comment, but there was a comment to think about the finishes. And so we kind of took that in a slightly different direction. We thought a tone-on-tone might work to help kind of singularize this building, the 423 building, make it read as its own independent building, distinct from 419. And then looking at the sort of finishes between that and the neighboring building here, the two sets of brick buildings kind of helped to frame that corner building. So again, kind of adds a little bit of distinction despite the ensemble of the buildings. The color for that, I've got some samples here, is meant to be sort of a Corten-colored aluminum, and that's meant to, again, be tone-on-tone with the brick building. While we're at it, the other sample that's there is the scratch metal sample. And that material lives within the signage band itself and also at the bulkhead. So the rest of the materials on 419 are cast aluminum, but within the bulkhead and within the signage band, there is that scratched metal, so that's that sample as well. And that's everything, so this is the final product.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
Those would be a cap, that's the intention, isn't it? This is a little more of a diagrammatic drawing. But those are meant to be a mullion cap, essentially, yeah.
All right, other questions? All right. I think if there are no other questions, then we can move to our discussion. So thank you very much. So I think the last time we saw this, we were generally supportive of this proposal, but did ask the applicant to re-study the proportions of the storefront and signage and transoms behind the signage. And the applicants have come back today, having done that, lowered the entire building, widened the columns, and reconfigured the storefronts to be tripartite in configuration with mullions in lieu of the butt jointed glass that we commented on last time. And in addition, there, as they said, there was a comment about the color of the metal for the rear addition, and they have re-studied that and chosen a Corten color that would relate to the brick side facades of both flanking buildings. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, in general, I think this is improvement. I was fine with the original addition color, but the Cortens color is fine. I think the proportions are better. And my one comment is, depending on how many companies lease the storefront, there seem to be an awful lot of signage. And so if there were four or five different stores, the amount of signage would make sense. But if there's only one or two, I think the signage could be reduced. And that's something, working with staff as the leasing works out, I think they can resolve. But in general, I appreciate the efforts and think it's a significant improvement.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letfy?
Proportions are really much better. I mean, all that tweaking, getting rid of some of the glazing, making it a little more vertical. The Corten color works very well. I hope the revenue gets approved. And I think the reduction in the size of the signage, I happen to also agree that there's too much signage. So what applicants generally do, not generally, some of them, especially when they're very detail-wise, is they look at, you know, and I can't, it's hard to know, because I don't think they understand the floor play, but you almost need to do like, sorry.
You almost need to do like a little bit of a master plan, where you say, okay, so if there are, if there's one user, this is how the signage is going to be. If there's three users of this space, I can't believe you're going to have that many users, because there are just not enough space on that floor. And you could work with staff on that, but I think that is generally what, where we've seen this done in places like Rockefeller Center and other buildings where the ground floor retail is critical. And it certainly is critical here, because it's what it's all about. Generally, they come to us in advance, but I think what we would maybe suggest, or what I'm thinking, is you could work with staff on the development of a master plan for that, for the signage.
Okay. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I love it. I think it's a big improvement to what was there before. I think that changing the dimensions made a big difference. Adding the mullions also made a big difference. You don't have that wide, you know, wide pane of glass. And I like what they did with the rear extension. Changing the color is a huge improvement as well. I'm okay with the signage. This is a very busy corner. This is a very plain, relatively plain building. So I'm fine with the number of signs that we have.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I find lowering the building makes it much better. I think the scale of it is nicer. I think the sign, I'm not opposed to the signage. I think it's interesting, looking at it visually, that the signage is located in a rectangle, but it's lower, and there are more space at the top. It's not symmetrically located. And I think that's what makes it so powerful, I think. If it was centered, perhaps you wouldn't see it as much. Even the sign has been reduced, but it still looks powerful. So I don't know. I can accept the signage if needed. It's interesting what happened. I went against the diagonal at one point. I thought it was too emphasized. But now I really like it. I think what they did with the match, make the colors pretty consistent up. And it's really kind of a surprise to see on top of a building. It's a nice touch architecturally.
Great, thank you. Commissioner? Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with the other Commissioners' comments on the, it's very much improved by the changes in dimensions. And the reduction of the size of the signage is a good thing. And it fits well now, and the use of the Corten color is also good. I'm kind of a mixed mind about the signage. It may look a little odd if it's like one tenant and it's repeated so many times. We usually wouldn't have that, but, you know, it's the design of the building, it fits well with, so, you know. I think I could approve it if we have a majority for approval, because it's not, you know, it doesn't bother me that much, really.
All right, it's a new building, and it's sort of built into the design of the building. Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
I'm okay with it as is.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
I agree with the comments that it's much improved, the refinement of details, and it's about time to heal this corner. It's been a very, very important corner. The one recommendation is the applicant next time use super glue on the, make it.
Commissioner, raise your hand.
Okay. All right, so I think we actually have enough to support it as is. We'll do an approval for it, but because there were some Commissioners who did ask you to reconsider, if you, as you continue to develop it, you can certainly try to reconsider the signage in tandem with the tenancy. But I think we have enough to approve it today as is. So I'm going to jump to Commissioner Master. Would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC-24-08399, 301 Canal, 419-421 Broadway, and 423 Broadway, Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I note that 423 Broadway is a building whose style, scale, materials, and details are among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, and that 301 Canal Street and 419-421 Broadway are not buildings for which the Historic District was designated. I further note that buildings within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District and its extension reflect shifting waves of development, evolving from residential to entertainment, manufacturing and storage, utilitarian and support uses, and back to residential, and that the Historic District experienced a period of stagnation and decay with little new construction occurring during the early to mid 1900s, at which time 301 Canal Street was constructed. Additionally, I note that at the public meeting of December 12th, 2017, the commission approved the demolition of the existing building and a new 122-foot-tall building at 301 Canal Street, AKA 419 Broadway. Finally, I note that a restoration of the historic building at 423 Broadway and structural stabilization work will be reviewed at staff level. I recommend approval, finding that the existing one- and two-story buildings to be demolished bear no resemblance to the historic row houses that once occupied the site and are not representative of the key period of significance of the Historic District, primarily represented by its 19th-century cast iron store and loft buildings. Therefore, their demolition will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. That Canal Street is characterized by a wide assortment of buildings in terms of footprint and height, where a variety is often found from one building to the next, and that the proposed one-story building will be within the range of scale and height of other buildings on corner sites throughout the district. That the tripartite facade composition will recall the base shaft and embleton pattern typical of buildings along Broadway. That the materials palette of the new building, featuring cast aluminum embleton, textured metal sign bands, and clear glass and aluminum storefronts will harmonize with the materials and finishes of neighboring buildings and buildings found throughout this Historic District. That the ornamental panels at the embleton and storefront piers and textured panels at the sign bands will abstractly reference cast iron details found on buildings throughout the Historic District, while contributing to the building's contemporary design. That design and finish of the proposed storefront infill, featuring tripartite, display windows, bulkheads, sign bands, and paired doors, will recall the configuration of typical historic storefront infill. That there is a historic precedent for large commercial signs at this site and a variety of signs and illumination types at buildings along Canal Street, a highly commercial thoroughfare. Therefore, the presence of multiple internally illuminated storefront signs at the sign bands will not detract from the streetscape. That the proposed rooftop railing, solar panels, and mechanical equipment and screen will be seen within the context of a variety of utilitarian lotline facades and rooftop accretions. That the construction of a full-height rear yard addition and rooftop bulkhead at 423 Broadway will not damage or remove any significant historic fabric from the rear of the building. That the proposed Corten-finished standing seam metal cladding at the visible lotline facade will help set the addition apart from the original building while maintaining the profile of the historic roof pitch and will read as part of the overall ensemble with a new building. That the historic fire escape baskets at the Broadway facade of number 423 will be retained and restored. Therefore, the proposed removal of the ladders will have limited visual impact on the facade and will not result in the loss of significant historic fabric. And that the proposed work will not enhance the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
It will enhance.
Yes, will enhance.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you. And we'll move to the next. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the next item. Next item is public meeting item number two, LPC 24-00195, An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 194, lot 16, 32 to 34 Walker Street, AKA 305 to 309 Church Street in the Tribeca East Historic District. This is a commercial building designed by Larry Meltzer and built in 1953 to 54, and an Italianate-style L-shaped store and loft building designed by E.J.M. Derrickin, built in 1867 to 68. The application is to demolish the corner building, construct a new building, alter facades, and construct rooftop additions. This was last presented at the public meeting of December 19th, 2023, and no action was taken at that time. Applicants will present revisions to the proposal after we open the proceedings.
Open the proceedings. Sorry, Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Still moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ward Dennis with Higgins, Quaysbarth, and Partners. We are back with revisions to 32, 34 Walker Street. As a reminder, this is the existing site at the corner of Walker to the right, Church to the left. There is a five-story cast iron building that wraps around a two-story taxpayer, the cast iron building constructed in 1867. The two-story taxpayer non-contributing building constructed in 1954. Our proposal is to construct a new building at the corner and restore the cast iron building. The photo on the left is the December presentation. The photo on the right is the revised presentation. At the December public hearing, I think the overall commission sentiment was very supportive of the design and height and massing of the new building, as well as the restorative work on the cast iron building and the penthouse and visibility of the other stuff at the roof. However, there were three specific areas that you asked us to look at in terms of the design of the new building. Starting at the top, you asked us to look at making the cornice stronger, less timid, to use one of the, to quote one of the Commissioners. At the middle of the building, you asked us to re-study the hierarchy of the corner pier versus the horizontals and the setback piers. And at the base of the building, you asked for more detail and design for the storefronts. So the cornice has been, excuse me, the cornice has been redesigned and increased in height and slightly in depth. At the main part of the building, we have set back the corner pier and wrapped the horizontals around from Church on the left to Walker on the right, as suggested by a couple of the Commissioners. And then we have shifted the horizontals slightly back so that the end piers adjacent to the cast iron building read stronger. The end piers adjacent to the cast iron building have not changed in dimension or setback, but the overall effect of this is to make the distinction between the new building and the old building somewhat clearer. It was a little bit, I think it was a little bit muddled before. And then at the base of the building, I'll show you more detail, but we have added more detail to the storefronts and refined the existing detail, as well as beefing up the cornice over the storefront. These are elevations. We have a number of line drawings. I'll go through them quickly, but can come back to them if there are questions. I do want to note that on the historic building on Walker Street on the right, we are still retaining the fire escape baskets, which are particularly historic at this facade, but we are now proposing to remove the ladders between the baskets at each floor. Otherwise, there are really no changes to the design or details of the work at the cast iron building either. the design or details of the work at the cast iron building either on Church or here, on Walker or here on Church. And then this is the view on Church Street. We have also modified slightly the size and position of the upper penthouse at the roof, and I'll show you that in detail later. Side sections of the proposed, again, we can come back to these as needed. And then an overall block elevation on Church Street, showing some of our neighbors to the north at the left, and then on Walker Street, again, showing some of our neighbors to the east at the right. We, we did, as before, have been looking at some of the precedents within the Historic District, particularly for corner buildings. At the top left is two eighty-one Church Street, where you do see these horizontals wrapping around the building at the corner. And we have used this building, as well as actually the, the building that previously existed on the site of the taxpayer, for inspiration for some of those details. And then as well at the, on the bottom row, some of the, excuse me, marble and cast iron details that we've been looking at to inform how the facade sets back and how the hierarchy of the facade works. And then also just to note and remind you, many of these corner buildings are taller than their neighbors as we are proposing. And then this is a detail at the storefronts, looking north on Church Street. Left is the previous proposal, right is the current proposal. Again, we have increased the height and some of the detail in the, in the storefront cornice, which was a request of one of the commissioners. We have also refined details, so we are now showing louvers at the, at the top level of the storefronts, above the, above the bronze bands. And then we have added, you can see slightly at the, at the bottom here, vault lights, steel vault lights that will be illuminated from within at the base of the building. You can also see, this is a good image to show, we have on the upper floors and at the base of the building introduced slightly taller aluminum, aluminum bronze-finished spandrels, lintels at the, at the top of the windows, as well as bringing those down at the jams. And then this continues down to the base of the building. And then we have used that same dark bronze-finished aluminum for the spandrels at, or for the bulkheads at the storefront in lieu of what we showed previously, which was a gray basalt stone. And then, again, details, detailed drawings of the storefronts, top, previous, middle, current, and then plan at the base. You can see here the louvers that we've introduced in the new storefronts, as well as the vault lights, which will be cut into steel, glass, glass lights cut into steel underneath the bulkheads. And then same again on Walker Street. I think it was Commissioner Goldblum asked about the longevity of fiberglass. We are proposing to use fiberglass capitals. And at the restoration of the cast iron building at the base of the building, as well as for elements at the, at the upper levels, and there was a concern about how the fiberglass, particularly at the base of the building, is holding up. So we did do a survey in the various Tribeca Historic Districts, looking at instances where fiberglass was used to replace cast iron elements, particularly at the base of the building. These are just three examples. There are, there are a few others. All of these are eight to ten years old, and I think all show that the material is held up quite well and is really still now indistinguishable from the cast iron, so we were happy to see that. And then we do have further storefront details, this at the entrance with the signage above, and then typical storefront bay. Again, I can come back to these. And then at the upper floors, detail for the corner, the revised corner pier. And then detail of typical, typical windows on the upper floors. And then this is a detail of the revised cornice. The cornice has gotten two feet taller in height and about a foot deeper in overall projection out over the building. And as a result, the, the cornice now becomes largely the parapet, so we have been able to reduce the height of the glass railing at the top. And we've also added some further detailing to the cornice so that it relate, still relates to the design of the horizontals elsewhere on the building. And we think this has worked out quite nicely. And I'm sorry, this is going back to the window details. This is just a detail. Top is the previous and bottom is the current, showing particularly how the, how the aluminum lintels are working. See that? This element here is aluminum, bronze-colored aluminum that's covering over this step out in the structure. And then these continue down on the sides of the building, on the sides of the window jams. As six-inch aluminum bronze-colored jam liners. Materials, no change, other than the elimination of the gray basalt at the base of the building. And then at the roof, as I mentioned, we have modified slightly the top penthouse. We've pushed it north by about two feet away from Walker Street. And it's extended about, sorry, by about four feet, pushed north, and then extended west by about two feet. And then the elevator shaft has relocated within the building, so it's now a little bit to the southwest of where it was before. This is a plan. And then you can also see that the overall penthouse extends about four feet further to the north. This is elevation, before and after. Again, before and after on Walker. Sections, the overall height of the penthouse has gone up by a couple inches, but the elevator bulkhead has come down, so the total height, I think only changes by about two inches. Oh, sorry, I also want to say on the plan, there was a comment previously about the upper cornice previously wrapped around the sides of the new building and then across the penthouses. We've eliminated that, so the upper cornice on the new building ends right at the edge of the new building as if it were a party wall condition, and then the upper cornices on the penthouse are, are just flat. See that here? And then you can see the, the flat cornice on the penthouse on the bottom image. And then overall sections. And then we did redo the mock-up because the penthouse had changed slightly. On the left is the previous views, on the right is the current view. This is a view from the south, looking north on Church Street, across the, the triangle between White and Franklin. You can see that the, the cornice has raised up and projects out a little bit more. So it, it blocks, it blocks more of the visibility up above. We now have an enclosure around the mechanical equipment and elevator bulkhead, and of course, the glass railings are much shorter at the roof. And then similarly here, from a little bit, the other side of the triangle, looking more up Church Street, similar conditions. Visibility has reduced slightly, although the enclosure is, is a little bit bigger. Because everything has shifted to the north on the, on the roof, there is a slight more visibility when looking on Church Street to the southeast, and that's shown in the bottom images. And then there is, we did not render it, but the top-left image, which actually should say current proposal, is a view from west on Lisbonard, where there is slightly more visibility of the penthouse from that angle. And then from the north on Canal Street, there is no change in visibility because the building to the north blocks any of the changes that are happening there. And I should say between Canal and Lisbonard, there's no change in the visibility as well. So that takes us through the changes, as you requested, and some of the additional changes that we've made since December.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi.
So. And are you, I think you had said that you're keeping the
Baskets.
The baskets, but you're not showing them in the rendering.
They're shown on one of the elevations, I think, yeah.
They are shown on the elevations if they're not here on the rendering.
You're right.
There are later nonhistoric baskets on the Church Street side, which we are removing. That's not changed from before. And that was, that was, I think, fine by everybody previously, but the baskets on Walker Street are, are to remain.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
On page forty-nine of fifty-four. You have the corner cut out. There. You see the previous one, you have the diagonal. And now you revise when you have the corner cut out. And I was confused because I is there a column there, or am I missing something?
I think I'll ask the architect, Jim.
Oh, I got confused with the front of the building and the back of the, am I missing something?
This is the back corner of the building.
That's the back corner.
Yeah, this is, this is the front corner of the building.
And that's the back corner.
This is the back corner. So there is currently a chamfered condition back there that we're removing. And then just squaring off.
Got it, thanks.
Is that, okay.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi.
So on the chasement, change or heavy up the width of the metal that you're using, because it's reading darker. I'm just wondering, it's like a little detail I just want to say. Do you understand what I'm asking? Yeah. You, I think that's on
Want to do it?
It's, I think it's one of the first renderings, actually.
Hi, my name's Jim Sasekorn from the Direct Collaborative. So in answer to your question, we did
Yeah.
We did add jam extensions that are two inches wider. That means that the resulting window between the jam extensions have been reduced by a total of four inches.
I'm talking about on the residential portion.
Same.
Same.
It's the same. So two inches, like a jam extension projecting eight inches forward to align with spandles and until above. But it really is only two inches wide, the windows, two inches wide on either side, so the windows reducing width.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? All right, not seeing any questions. Other questions? We'll move to our discussion now. All right, so this is a proposal for a new building that would replace an existing building, one-story commercial building, and connect to this, the cast iron building that would wrap around it on Church and Walker Street. And it includes a penthouse on the historic building. And the last time that we saw this, we did ask support generally, the height, style, scale, and massing. But we did ask them to look at the details, particularly to strengthen the cornice, to think about the proportions and hierarchy of the, the piers, and particularly at the corner, and the details on the windows and the storefronts. We also asked them not to wrap the cornice on the lotline facade of the new building, which they've eliminated from the proposal. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. I think this is a great example of how little things make a big difference. And I think that these subtle things that they've done have been all successful. I think this is an appropriate scheme. I think that the adding of detail to the, to the ground floor storefronts is adds richness and depth and texture without compromising the essentially contemporary nature of the building. I think that the modifications to the planes and the kind of hierarchy of the, of the moldings on the upper levels is completely successful in rearranging the emphasis of the building to be a corner building and to kind of follow in the modes by which corner buildings were composed in the past in this district. I think that the detailing is, is, is simple and straightforward and, and is, in my view, totally appropriate. Just as an aside, I'd suggest that the applicants take a look at the details for drips. I think that the very deep soffits that they're showing don't show any drips in the, in the details, and I know that they're just schematic for our purposes. But I think in general, the notion of adding detail and interest to the underside of those now very deep soffits would serve the building well and would also prevent it from looking really dirty and gross in a very short period of time.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree. They, I think the changes have really made it much more successful. I think that the cornice being heavier and more detailed is, is definitely an improvement. That the penetration and door changes and the increased frame, with the increased framing really improved the, your, the entire composition and your sense, perception of the proportions of the building. And I'm, you know, glad to see them retaining the fire escape baskets. And that they squared off the top of the penthouse also, I think, is is a good move and improves the composition, so I can approve it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I, I agree with my fellow commissioners, especially that one. That two lines, two datum lines have improved the whole building. The second pass have made it B-plus to A-plus almost. It's, and the ground floor, the, the street level, the color changes made it just wonderful.
Thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I agree with the other commissioners' comments. I just want to note that the storefront changes are, are really very well done. It really does make a huge difference, and I applaud them for doing such a nice job.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I'm gonna echo Michael and the other commissioners have said. It's, there's like almost no comparison between the original presentation and where you are now. And the building is much, you know, as Michael said, there's much more depth, there's much more detail. It's like, it's a more sophisticated, successful building, and the the detailing with the metal plates and, you know, wrapping the horizontals around the, you know, the corner, everything about it has really contributed. It's a very it's very exciting because, as we always discuss, corner buildings are so important. And I think you're, you're, you've, you know, now made this a, a very significant building, and I look forward to seeing it. And I think the work on the penthouse and the visibility is completely fine. So, good job.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think the, the ground floor and especially the corner, I think the corner is really but I think it's a very nice integration, well done, very thorough research and kudos to the
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I don't have any comments to add appropriate, and a good job.
Right, okay, thank you. So I think we're in agreement. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make the motion?
Sure. Regarding thirty-two to thirty-four Walker Street, also known as thirty, three oh five to three oh nine Church Street in the Tribeca East Historic District, the application is to demolish one building, construct a new building, alter facades, and construct rooftop additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details of the, of the L-shaped building on thirty-four Walker Street are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca East Historic District. And that the two-story corner building at thirty-two Walker Street, which replaced an earlier five-story Italianate-style store and loft building that was built in eighteen sixty-seven, is not one for which the historic district was designated. I also note that the streetscapes of both Walker and Church Streets are comprised of primarily five-story cast iron and masonry store and loft buildings with some variation in height due to floor-to-floor height differences. I recommend approval. Finding that the demolition of the existing non-contributing building will not detract from the special or historic and architectural character of the historic district, that the proposed building's height and massing will be consistent with the height and massing of historic store and loft buildings found throughout the historic district, including nearby buildings within the historic Walker and Church streetscapes, street, streetscapes, that the presence of the six-story building immediately adjacent to the five-story neighboring buildings will be consistent with this portion of Church Street and within the historic district, which includes similar juxtapositions of buildings of different heights. That the facade of the proposed new building will maintain the plane of the, of the street wall, which is a significant consistent feature of the streetscapes in this historic district. That the floor plate levels and structural framing of the existing historic building will remain. And the connections made to the new corner building will occur at select openings within lot line walls. That the proposed two-story rooftop addition to the existing historic building will be set back from the front facades and partially hidden by the top floor of the new building. That the visibility of the proposed rooftop additions on both new and historic buildings, as seen from the public thoroughfares to north, south and west, is consistent with the industrial character of the historic district that historically featured a variety of utilitarian rooftop accretions visible from a distance. That the design and finish of the rooftop addition consisting of limestone cream-colored stucco and bronze-finished metal will blend with finishes of surrounding buildings within the complex, within a complex roof scape. That the modular organization of the facades, the predominant expression of structure and the palette of materials and finishes will recall and harmonize with the surrounding streetscapes and that the proportions and rhythm of the facades will relate well to the historic adjacent cast iron building. That the use of limestone will recall and harmonize with in a contemporary manner the marble and sandstone cladding of certain store and loft buildings and painted cast iron facades within the historic district. That the proportions, materials, configuration and details of the proposed storefronts in the new building including, including paneled bronze-finished metal, metal framing, bulkens and transoms, small integral louvers and steel and glass simulated vault lights between the storefront peers are consistent with the storefronts found throughout the historic district and relate well to the building above. That the new building's fenestration, including graduated window heights on the upper floors, floor-to-ceiling metal casing windows and a dark-finished glass and dark, and a, and a dark finish in glass hard rail, guardrails will reinforce the verticality of the facades and will harmonize with the fenestration pattern of the neighboring historic buildings. That the wider vertical mullion on windows at the central bay of the historic building's church-street facade will respond to interior demising walls and will not compromise the overall historic fenestration. That the, that only the simply designed ladders will be removed from the cast iron fire escape at the Walker Street facade while retaining and restoring the decorative baskets, the most prominent element of the fire escape. And that the installation of the, of missing decorative plain cast iron features at this historic building will help return the building closer to its original design intent. And that the limited use of fiberglass as a substitute material with a painted finish to blend with the surrounding cast iron will not result in an overwhelming amount of substitute materials on this cast iron building. And the change in material will not be readily perceptible from the street.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, we're now going to move to our public hearing agenda and noting there is going to be a schedule change. We are going to skip ahead to public hearing item number three before returning to items one and two afterwards. So moving into public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-four dash one zero one three seven. This is an application for an advisory report in the Borough of Manhattan, block twelve fifty-four, lot one. The Soldiers and Sailors Monument Riverside Park, Soldiers and Sailors Monument in the Scenic Landmark. This is a monument designed by Charles W. and Arthur A. Stoughton and Paul E. M. Dubois, then built in nineteen hundred and nineteen oh two within an English Romantic-style park built in eighteen seventy-three to seventy-five and designed by Frederick L. Olmstead with modifications and additions to the park built in nineteen thirty-four to thirty-seven, designed by Clifton Lloyd and Gilmore Clark. The application is to modify balustrades, install pathways, stairs and railings, remove curbing, relocate cannonballs and regrade the site.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Sybil Young with New York City Parks. We are very excited to be here today at this point in our project for the Soldiers and Sailors Monument in Riverside Park. As mentioned, we are seeking your review of modifications that are needed to bring barrier-free access to the site. But before we dive into that, I just wanted to give a brief background on the monument and the larger project that we are working on. So in addition, in addition to providing barrier-free access to the site, the project is a complete restoration of the entire monument. It has not seen any significant improvements since nineteen sixty-two. And in two thousand seventeen, we completed a comprehensive condition survey of the memorial. And not surprisingly, many areas were found to be in fair to poor condition. So our design team is currently building upon that two thousand seventeen study, updating their conditions and developing a complete restoration plan for the monument. Also looking at improving lighting at the site. Here is the site in Riverside Park at West Eighty-Ninth Street. The restoration is of all components of the memorial, the interior, exterior, roof, terraces, plazas, retaining walls, balustrades. Everything is to be restored. Here is a historic image. It actually says nineteen thirty-five, but this should read around nineteen ten. Here is an aerial taken before the railroad was decked over and really gives a good sense of the prominence of this memorial within the park. Also shows the very steep grades to the west of the memorial. There is an image from nineteen eleven and then the same view today. It's a little hard to see, but the upper area is currently fenced off and no access is allowed up there. This is a timeline of the monument's history, some key points. It was completed in nineteen oh two, underwent some work in nineteen thirty. In nineteen sixty-two, it was fully restored, landmarked in nineteen seventy-six. Also mentioned that it is within the Riverside Park Scenic Landmark. The monuments remain largely unchanged since its construction with two exceptions. When it was originally built, the paving was herringbone brick with marble banding. In nineteen thirty, that was, the herringbone brick was replaced with concrete. And then during the nineteen sixty-two restoration, that concrete was replaced with sandstone, which is what is there today and in very poor condition. Also, in nineteen sixty-two, all of the marble balustrades were replaced with limestone. And this is our restoration plan in very broad strokes. All of the materials we are proposing to restore or replace in kind. The one exception is that sandstone, which has not held up well, sandstone not being a very good paving material. We're actually proposing to go back to the herringbone brick and have the original design drawings for that. So we'll be using those to guide our design. We will be working closely with LPC staff on all of our restoration details and also with the Public Design Commission as a monument. This is one of those cases where there is dual jurisdiction here. But we do need to remove all of the paving, the concrete subbases from nineteen oh two that needs to be replaced and a new drainage system installed. So now we're going to jump into what we are here to present today, which is that accessibility. This monument is truly a landmark in all senses for this community and beyond. It's visited by veterans groups. It hosts the city's largest Memorial Day celebration every year. So we really can't emphasize enough both its significance and the importance of providing accessibility. Whenever we're bringing accessibility to our landmark structures, as you know, it's a challenge. And here we are also faced with issues of very steep grades and lots of stairs. And the, the goals of the restoration, of the, sorry, of the accessibility was, was really to make it clear that the monument is accessible. We didn't want to hide it. We wanted anyone approaching who needed that accessible path to, to see that it was accessible, that they are welcome there. And then, of course, you know, balancing that with having as minimal impact on the historic fabric of the monument and views to the monument. So this is the challenge presented to our design team. We think they've done a very good job of providing that welcoming access with a minimal impact on the monument. So I'm going to turn it over to Lang Pugh of WXY Architects, who's going to walk you through that plan and how we arrived at that plan.
Thank you. Lang Pugh from WXY. I wanted just to use this slide quickly to orient and also talk a bit about the principles that we followed in developing a design. I think it's useful to think about not just ADA accessibility, but universal design and the, and the principles behind that, which is that the access be equitable, flexible, simple and intuitive, minimizing hazards and low physical effort. And I think that all of these principles have actually informed how to approach adding this access to a very special place in the simplest way possible. The access is highlighted, the current access is highlighted by these arrows, and I'll take you through some analytical slides very quickly. I just want to also note that using the terminology from the historic drawings, we're going to refer to locations using the names they used. So the, the first southern plaza terrace area is referred to as the lower terrace. This is the upper terrace. And then they referred to the wraparound of the main monument as the esplanade and in the rear, the belvedere. So as mentioned previously, the, there are very steep grades to the west and to the north. So we've highlighted those. They're well over fifteen percent. This area has some pretty steep grades as well, but a little bit more manageable. And the, and the Riverside Drive upper, I mean, sorry, the Riverside Park upper walkways are obviously all within, you know, easy access. We do have a park path that has some steepness to it in this area, which we'll talk a bit about later, what our solution for that is. This photo is the west side showing you the steep bank behind or west of the monument. Another sort of layer of information here is just orienting to a couple of features. There's this little alcove of the previous location of a statue of George Washington, which was removed for the construction of this memorial. And they preserved some of the the walls or curb walls around that statue and installed cannonballs in that location, which is a favorite place for children to try their dexterity, their balance. And so you can see basically some of the same soil recommendations. There's, the slopes are steep enough that they're actually very difficult to maintain. And here are some special features as well, that some large trees. There's a honey locust here and then a couple of ginkgos that are very well-established trees. The, there's a pretty dense landscape screening from Riverside Drive, between Riverside Drive and the monument in this area. And there's some vistas of the park, the lower park in the river from these points. There's, this is also just documenting existing fencing and rails except for this segment right here along this path, that they'd be largely unaffected by the, the work of this project. So the, in terms of trying to come up with the simple, flexible and and equitable approach to access, what we decided to think about is how to create a sort of parallel path of access to the main formal path of access. So as I mentioned before, you've got stairs between all of these terrace levels and obviously down to the belvedere. So we wanted to create a way of creating a kind of continuous route that could mirror that. The big, there, there's some, this, this leads us into the impacts to the historic fabric. Obviously, entering the terraces requires some removals on the lower terrace and on, on the esplanade. But the biggest move we've made is to figure out how to address this transition between the upper terrace and the other two terraces. And we did that by focusing on pulling forward the existing stair towards Riverside Drive and creating an expanded landing that allows us to create a link between all of these terraces. The overall approach here is that we're trying to do this all as sloped walkways, under five percent pitch. That allows us to avoid handrails, guardrails and all of those elements that start to create visual clutter when working around the historic element. And so the, as you start from the south, there's a sloped path. And we slip in, in this last bay of the baluster, balustrade. And then there is the one place where we need to have a ramp. It's this little quarter circle turn because of the grade change there. This, as we move across this new expanded landing, we have a less than five percent path that winds its way and preserves the trees that exist there by wrapping around them. As we get closer to the monument, we push that path right up against the wall. So you can actually touch the wall as you walk up to the, to the esplanade level. And then we take out a, a whole bay of balusters and coping at the arrival. The access to the belvedere, we, we take through the park. So that's the one part that doesn't quite parallel. But so if you're going to the belvedere, we're going to regrade this path to allow for access straight to there. There's also some existing trip hazards at the, at this path between this, the north stair and the belvedere that we're going to resolve by resetting hopefully as, as much as possible, existing stair treads to get that to work out. We are going to have to add one tread at the top here to make that work. And we'll see more of that in a moment. So to just go back to the change, just the before and after of the existing stair to the upper terrace and pulling it forward. We propose to use the granite, a granite matching the existing granite of all the stair, all the stair treads on the, on the monument are granite. We will use granite pavers to expand this landing and then new granite treads here. These paths, we will do, because of their shape and, and pitch and all of that, we're going to be doing, proposing to do those out of concrete with a pigmented landmarked concrete. One other feature, just to sort of really tie this, this new path into the park and not have it just be an isolated solution for accessibility, is we've added a small landscape stair here to link it. And it also is angled and positioned to frame the arrival at the upper esplanade. Here's a cleaner view of all of that with the grades listed on each of these. And here's a section that's actually through, if you're looking on the plan, it's, it's through that landscape stair and through the arrival at the esplanade level. And here's another section showing how we will protect this tree. There'll be a There'll be a metal landscape edge that should disappear largely into the landscape of the planting. Going to focus a little bit on the removals here at the balusters. This is the esplanade level. We've highlighted both in drawings and photos. And this is where that is from the from the esplanade level. At the lower terrace, we're proposing to take this last segment out and include the balusters, the bottles and the coping and also this half pile stair. And the the cannonballs, as I mentioned before, are there because of the grading that we need to do in certain path. They are need to be relocated. And we're proposing to keep them because of their presence and popularity. And but we will be shifting them over to a new sort of arrangement in a circle at the triangular path, the intersection of the paths over here. And then, as I mentioned before, the landing at between the stair, the north stair and the belvedere, this isn't very poor condition, but even beyond that, there's these strange level changes here that we're going to eliminate and sort of mocked up this in photograph how we would raise them up. And that's simply by adding a riser, a stair tread at the top of the stair to the lower path. I'm going to take you through some before and after renders, including photos. I'll go through really quickly. We're trying to represent not just what it is overall, but what the experience of traveling along this new accessible path. So that's the proposed alteration to the landscape. You can see how the stair pushes out. The planters on either side are creating both the, you know, unified design, but also masking some of the grade changes. So we're going to walk from the south to the north, basically along this route. Here's the existing entry point. And then the proposed, you can see the one section of ramp is shown here with handrails on both sides to comply with the code requirements. And this is essentially standing where the ramp will be. And a view, a little bit elevated, so you can see what's going on across the way, but essentially the same plan position. And then at the top where we arrive, this is the the arrival point. And then a view, more of a close up view of the the landscape path. And a view from basically across Riverside Drive. The new materials that we proposed to to accomplish this, something happened to this and the text dropped off. But the 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 top is granite, which is the new stair treads. The next item down would be number two is the Riverside Park standard steel handrail painted black. We would wear Riverside Park paving is, you know, disturbed by this project. It'll obviously be matching asphalt hex pavers. This is the concrete, the pigmented landmark gray concrete. And then where we've added the landing, it's the same granite for pavers in that area. And so this is, this is where I finish, just before and after.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Chaplin.
Yeah, it's obviously great to see the monument and the surrounds being restored. I just have a a couple of questions. One is about the lawn being replaced with ground cover in general. Is that just an aesthetic desire because you think that there'll be the floral material will be more attractive? Or is it in all, as well as present preventing desire lines from developing from people just walking around?
But yes, it's that. And it won't just be floral. It'll be woody plants as well. It'll be a mixture and it's a more sustainable approach to a banked landscape. Right now, if you look at the lawns, they've they they're in pretty poor condition, even though they're fenced, people go in them with their dogs and things like that. And so we're going to use native plants that to sort of create a sustainable landscape.
Got it. So it'll be much more maintainable as well. And the winding path was the design decision for that. Is that based really just on the elevations and the necessity of the terrain? Or did you feel that that was for some reason more?
It really did get kind of engineered out of solving for the grade changes and trying to stay under the five percent, safely under the five percent. I mean, you're generally between three and a half and four and a half percent. And also that tree is a big factor. So we couldn't raise the grade at that point any higher than we are without putting it at risk. And the other important grading thing to solve is between here and here, there's a significant grade change. We needed separation between this point and this point in order to create a suitable elevation change. Otherwise, we would have ended up piling up soil into this notch, which would have then been above the the bottles on the baluster on that side. So we've we've had to pull and stretch this out to make this look like a natural.
Yeah, I'm sure you'd have to do that. And I was wondering about the little kind of weaving that I, you explained that, thank you, quite well. And the one final question is, do you really need that additional small stair that's going up to the path there?
No, but when we didn't have it, it looked like a very long loop that was a little bit too dedicated to the purpose of accessibility, whereas we wanted this to feel like just a part of the park. And it it just felt very alone, like you you would have, you would have no escape. And I know that if you're in a, if you're in a wheelchair, you're obviously got to go all the way or turn around the way you came out. But just, we wanted to keep the path narrow. We didn't want to have to widen it to have people, you know, have it feel very comfortable, people passing each other and all that. So having a little bit of escape valve felt to us like the right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I'm looking at page twenty seven and page twenty eight. And there's an attitude about the podium that's original, that you're willing to show the walls, the the base walls. And in your design, you're covering them all up. The question I have, is it technically because of the ramping and the elevation that you had to cover up the foundation walls? Or is it an aesthetic approach?
It's essentially the, it's sort of the same questions to why we stretched this out. The same answer to the question, we had to stretch this out. We wanted to have all the grade, we didn't want to introduce retaining walls in order to make the change in elevation. Parks didn't want that. We didn't want that. We could have had a terrorist approach, but it could have created new architectural elements that, again, then you have to figure out what's its attitude to the monument. But also it's another maintenance element to 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 the parks to to worry about. So we we felt like the, already the the soil mounts up quite a bit. Go to the photo. This is a good one. You can see right here, it's it's not covering as much of the wall, but it compared to the the west side of this, it's a significant amount of cover. And so we're just sort of pushing that further, you know, that idea further. And
And that effect is that the, everything is graded up to the wall. So essentially, the wall is gone.
Yeah, the granite, the granite. Let me go back to the, the granite will still be exposed at this corner and in this notch on the upper side. But as you get towards the entry point, we would have to choose either between having a wall, which would then likely require a railing or, you know, allow our soil to do all the work.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Let me just check. Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
Would it have been possible to carry this snaky path around to the back and come in the back? Or was this the only location that worked?
You mean, let me go back to the plan.
The north side, the northeast quadrant. Does it fall off there too much?
Picture back here. So if if we basically, this elevation down here is
I'm not talking about down there. I'm talking about at the top where your snaky path comes in and then makes a turn and then goes back south and enters, let's say, at seven o'clock. Up is at twelve. I'm saying, could you enter at like three thirty and have the path keep on going around, following the curve of the monument to the to the north and kind of enter at three thirty instead of at seven o'clock? Does that make sense?
No, if you get in mind.
So you enter here.
Yeah.
Could you continue this path?
There, yeah.
We chose not to do that because part of the equitable access is to try to arrive as close to the same place on the monument as as the formal approach.
Have to take it from the other end, I think, the other path or something. That may not be that accessible.
Yeah, no, I I assumed that was the right answer, but I
Yeah, no, we we looked at, we we, I mean, we looked at coming at this from all three sixty of the monument. And on the west side, it's just too much of an elevation change. You would have ended up with a massive structure. On this side, we started to figure out, once we figured out that pulling the stair forward could create this this parallel route, because at first we were thinking we'd have to solve each one individually. And that didn't feel adequate to addressing it as a as an equitable approach. So anyway, we 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 did look at what it would mean. At first, we thought that's where we could get all our length and come all the way around. But then we're looking at the back of the monument when the real ceremonial entry is the the doors on the on the south.
All right.
In terms of the grade, as you piled it in the picture that you, that Everard was talking about is along here, right? You said that this was, this was down at current grade more or less?
Yes, yes.
So you're piling it from here up?
Correct.
So is there any, is there like kind of a maximum slope to that such that you might be able to kind of push the dirt a little bit further to the north and expose a little bit more foundational?
We can look at that. Yeah, we'll we'll prioritize that in the final.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Chen.
First, I just want to commend you. I think this is one of, of all the ADA access, I think this is one of the most logical, thoughtfully done, really utilized the topography to the maximum extent. I had to commend the team, whoever came up with this. This is great work. Along with Commissioner Goldblum and Diane's question, with that landscaping stair, is it likely that the people might then cut across the lawn and just go straight up to that new opening that you just cut? Have you thought about that?
Yeah, the the mentioned earlier that we would be using shrubs and woody plants. Those would be really concentrated in that location to to make it not very passable.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I'm fascinated by this, oh, these callenboks.
Yes.
The the original, the original was kind of caged in, hemmed in. And you're opening them up. What what's the idea there?
Well, the the, we had to move them. And at first, we didn't think that was a big deal. But now we know from talking to the community, even talking to my wife, who played on, she was five, that it's like you can't get rid of the cannonballs. It's like, so we, the the, finding a place where it's relatively flat, where we could place them was somewhat difficult. And it's also has to factor in parks' operations and for smaller vehicles. They don't bring trucks up here, but but they're gators and things. Figuring out where we could put it where it wouldn't interfere with that was not so simple. And so this was where we felt like they should go. I think the detailing of how they get reset isn't totally baked yet. So I mean, it could be that we do end up with some sort of protective wrapper for them.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, let's, we'll see if we have public testimony and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. I see a a few remote participants with their hands raised. If you would like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. I see that Assembly Member or Councilmember Gail Brewer is in the in the room. Assembly Member Brewer, if you, yes. So we'll first be hearing from Councilmember Gail Brewer. I am promoting you to panelist right now.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm on a cell phone. I think you can hear me. I am Gail Brewer and I am the council member for the Upper West Side. And I'm thanking you for the opportunity to testify in support of the improvement accessibility in particular, proposed for the area surrounding Soldiers and Sailors Memorial in Riverside Park. Westsiders have come to the monument since nineteen oh two, built to honor Union Army soldiers who fought against slavery in the Civil War and serving as a gathering place for veterans and civilians to remember all those who have served this country. Designated landmark in nineteen seventy six, as you know, its last comprehensive restoration was in nineteen sixty two. But in two thousand and eight, along with Mayor Bloomberg, I allocated almost a million dollars to restore just the plaza. But the monument itself has been closed to the public for all the leaking reasons since twenty seventeen. It's not a surprise to anyone that I feel very passionate about this monument and its preservation. Peg Green helped as head of the Landmarks Conservancy. We did a petition to get funding. And the mayor's offices, Veterans Affairs and other electives help. Mayor Eric Adams and Parks Commissioner Sue Donahue allocated sixty two point three million to restore and preserve the memorial, including ADA accessibility, and I certainly had a lot to do with that. The first renderings of the redesign of the memorial were presented to Board Seven last month, as you know, and the board approved the proposal. The monument is to be completely restored. And you're hearing today about the wonderful ADA accessibility to the different levels and lighting that elevates the appearance at night. The ADA access access is exciting and overdue. You can see that the architects, with your suggestions, have found a way to make all of the terraces accessible by building our garden walk on the east side of the monument. And then going back to the nineteen oh two design of the brickwork around the monument. And I love that the surveying is done by drones, I think, instead of scaffolding. So I urge LPC to approve the proposed accessibility improvements for the monument. The future of this memorial is bright. Restored to its former glory will again speak in a way that honors our memory of war and the pursuit of peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Natasha Kazmi from Manhattan Community Board Seven. Natasha Kazmi, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Natasha Kazmi and I am the co-chair of Manhattan Community Board Seven's Parks and Environment Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of this agenda item on behalf of the board. On Monday, May twentieth, the Parks Department presented the proposed restoration work and ADA-friendly design of the Soldiers and Sailors Monument before our committee. Across the board, we were impressed with the thoughtful care the design team has put into creating a pathway that is universally accessible and welcoming while also remaining true to the historic nature of the site. We also appreciate that the the fact that the renovation of the monument itself is almost entirely being done in kind. It was unanimously approved in committee. And on June fourth, the full board also voted overwhelmingly in favor of this restoration. I am here to represent the community board. And the community of the Upper West Side is made up of, among others, the elderly, the frail. among others, the elderly, the frail, the disabled, as well as the much younger with baby carriages. I myself have been suffering from a stress fracture in my left foot for the last three weeks. And we believe as a board that this restoration will allow everyone to enjoy the entirety of the monument, regardless of their ability, which has never been the case before. So as such, on behalf of CB7, I urge you to vote in favor of this design as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Andrea Goldwin from the New York Landmarks Conservancy. Andrea Goldwin, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is so pleased to see that the project to make desperately needed repairs and improvements at the Sailors and Soldiers Monument is finally getting underway. We appreciate the long-term advocacy of Councilmember Brewer and very much appreciate that the city has committed significant funding. In the application before you today, we support the restorative work, including the reintroduction of brick at the terraces. The new walkway paths will provide greater accessibility and benefit many visitors to the monument. However, we note that this is a robustly bozart structure with a pronounced symmetry. We believe that the paths would be more appropriate if they reflected that symmetry with a more classical, less naturalistic layout. We understand that site conditions might hinder this, but encourage the designers to explore this alternative. Thank you for the opportunity to express the Conservancy's views.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Megan Fitz, Megan Fitzpatrick from Landmark West. Megan Fitzpatrick, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee applauds this arguable approach to the complex problem of making a landmark monument accessible while maintaining its character. We are delighted to see this monument getting the attention it deserves. As a memorial site and a place of gathering and admiration for many Upper Westsiders, its restoration is vital for the community. The return of the original herringbone brick pavers, the intended design by Stoughton, Stoughton and DuBois, is equally important to the character of the historic monument and we are glad to see them returned almost 90 years later. Our committee would like to know if any attempt could be made to alter the material of the handrails. These pipe railings are seen in abundance at historical sites and we understand they are a cost-effective and minimalistic choice. However, another material, perhaps bronze, would read better with the overall monument. Bronze features elsewhere on the monument and it's an easy material to maintain over time. Further, we, while we understand the significance of symmetry in the original monument, we wonder if double handrails are code necessary at the newly introduced ADA paths. We also echo the comments of our colleagues and believe that LPC's report should be binding, not advisory, as this monument is an individual landmark. With that, our committee recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from John Graham from the Victorian Society of New York. John Graham, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society, New York. With its setting in Riverside Park adjacent to the Riverside West End Historic District, the Soldiers and Sailors Monument is a perfect example of classic New York urbanism. The monument is not only within a scenic landmark, it is an individual landmark designated in 1976. This important fact was omitted from the agenda description. In its Riverside Park Scenic Landmark Designation Report, the commission calls the monument a "building." And because it's an existing building, we think landmarks should assert its binding jurisdiction in design review as mandated by the city charter. The proposed comprehensive restoration of historic features is much needed and appropriate. Replacing deteriorated sandstone paving at the terraces with herringbone-patterned red brick will restore the original design. But we need a sample paver. It needs to be dimensioned, colored and finished to match historic pavers of the period. Modern red brick pavers will not do. The proposed accessible route is an excellent solution. It consists almost entirely of a sloped walk through the naturalistic landscape bordering the monument. It's far better than the brutal insertions of ramps that we see all too frequently in parks, including a couple of recent examples in Central Park. But doing this causes some troubling effects that we think warrant discussion. These effects include disconnecting the monumental eastern stair, eastern stair from the historic terrace and crowding it against Riverside Drive. The expanded terrace also results in the loss of the bases of the two huge volutes that flanked the stairs, the left looking partly buried. At the beginning of this route, at the south stair, the new walk crowds the landscape and may require excavating and exposing the base of the balustrade. We recommend the intrusive floodlight poles throughout the site be removed in favor of less obtrusive lighting hardware. There are many new and replacement handrails proposed for the stairs and a short section of ramp. These are proposed to be of extremely simple, square-sectioned form. This is a mistake. Instead of helping them disappear, this design will stand out as a modern intrusion within the bozart splendor of the monument and the picturesque landscape of the park. We recommend simple changes, such as adding volutes to the ends of the rails and softer, historically elegant shapes to the rails and posts. This will allow the new railings to blend more comfortably with this, their historic surroundings. Some examples are provided in our written testimony. Masonry and pavement configuration at the present site of the cannonballs is historic. More of it should be retained. And we recommend a more interesting arrangement of cannonballs and pavement at the new site, sorry, Commissioners. Finally, we compliment the applicants on this presentation. It's the clearest and most comprehensive we've ever seen for a complicated landscape project. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from Michelle Arbelu. Michelle Arbelu, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello. Michelle Arbelu for the Historic Hist学 Council. HGC applauds this excellent proposal and thorough presentation. We find this restoration work and accessibility upgrade welcome and appropriate. We believe the proposed handrails at the monument, at the monumental steps could be more ornate, so they are in keeping with the style of this individual landmark. Because the Soldiers and Sailors Monument is itself an individual landmark and noted as a building within, not simply a feature of the Riverside Park scenic landmark, LPC's report should be binding, not advisory, as listed on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hand raised for this item. If you would like to speak on this item now, please click the raise hand button. Okay, there are no more hand raised to speak, so I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you very much. Would you like to respond to some of the comments we've heard?
I think the handrail discussion will have to be deferred to parks. Um, we can revisit that. In terms of the, the formality of, or lack of formality of the landscape path, again, this was all done to avoid needs, needing structured retaining or structured, uh, ramps. And you could make it more formal, but that would be a completely different approach. And we'd be talking about, why is that wall there? And, uh, why, why do you need a handrail? You know, so our overall approach was to do the lightest touch architecturally possible. It is a big landscape move, but it's not adding new elements that then have to somehow bridge between accessibility and historic detailing.
Okay, thank you. And before we move, yeah.
I just wanted to note that is the handrail that is found throughout Riverside Park and that handrail design was based on a handrail that exists at the Joan of Arc Memorial, um, which dates from the early 1900s. So it is, um, based on historic handrail. And, you know, we did want to keep it simple, not introducing a, a new design element at the monument.
Great, thank you. Before we go to final questions, I'll ask, also want to ask our general counsel, Mark Silverman, to respond to the, uh, jurisdictional questions raised in testimony.
Um, yes, thank you, Chair. Um, just so we're all clear, the, um, uh, the Landmarks Commission issues a binding report when it acts in lieu of the, PDC, but the PDC has always retains primary jurisdiction over memorials and works of art and things like that. So, um, that is why this, this is considered a memorial. Yes, there's perhaps a building there, but it is a memorial. Uh, it's one of a piece and so we're treating it, um, in that way. And, and that's why we're advisory.
Commissioner Gold?
Two questions. Were there any historic railings or was there any evidence of historic railing at this site?
The only railing that exists now or that we have evidence of, uh, is on this this stair here.
And do you know if, if, if that was original to the monument?
It wouldn't have been because that stair was placed when they decked the railroad. So it's old, but it's just not...
And there's nothing in pictures or anything or drawings? Nothing?
No.
Okay. And is there any intention to open the interior at any point?
Uh, the limited access to the, to the interior, but we're not solving for ADA for that because there's two steps, two risers and a threshold. There would be no way to do that without significant alterations to the store fabric. So if they do that, there will be some sort of temporary measure.
Lastly, um, I'm, maybe I missed it, but you had mentioned at the outset that lighting was part of the scope and lighting was referred to by others, but I don't think we talked about lighting.
We, we're still working out the implications of adding true architectural lighting. The lighting that's there now is part of the DOT security lighting.
Okay.
Off grid, off grid, uh, thing. So there's very limited options there. So we're still working out the implications of bringing in a new electric service for, for architectural lighting.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Let me check with Mark. Okay. So I think if there are no other questions, we'll then move to our discussion. And, um, before we do that, we'll close the hearing. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I do see a hand raised in the... I don't know if Gregory has gone, but there is a hand raised, um, in the panelists. Somebody named Casey. And that if, I suppose we have to open the hearing if we're gonna, okay. Yeah, let's find out if they're in fact here to speak on this item.
Casey, I am promoting you to panelist right now.
Here to speak on this item.
Okay. Hi, Casey, are you here to speak on this item? Hello, Casey, are you with us?
I think it's...
Oh, and...
May not be. Maybe the next item.
Appropriate. It may be, uh...
Yeah, okay, we're gonna, we've just closed the hearing. So we'll begin our discussion on, um, this item. And I know this restoration is, um, a long time coming. And there's a lot of, um, support for that in the comments. We did also hear some other comments about, um, the railings and, um, the general approach. And so we'll begin our discussion. The applicant has presented this as a, a very, sort of the light touch, uh, to free up the monument and provide, uh, barrier-free access in a way that nestles into the landscape and allows the monument to read. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, thank you, Sharon. Um, it's really great to see, uh, the ADA access being created and, uh, I support the regrading and the removal of the balustrade section. I think that moving the cannonballs to a location is more centered rather than kind of an afterthought on that path is actually a good thing and works very nicely. Can kind of be a little interest, you know, thing for teaching and so forth. My questions earlier related to the concerns raised by the Conservancy. And I just wanted to say in general, I appreciated the very thoughtful response. It was very clear that a lot of, uh, work has gone into thinking about alternatives for the site and, and how they can manage the need to create accessibility. The reason I think people have concerns and I did is that this monument has such a stately presence. The way it was situated with the, the lawns and this sort of graceful curving just really sets it off and, uh, kind of enhances its impressiveness. So, uh, the plantings and the winding paths kind of soften the edges a bit. But I was kind of persuaded and I'm sympathetic with the, uh, sustainability issues, which I'm well familiar with from my career at parks. And the need, which, and, and it'll be an attractive setting, you know, many, many monuments have somewhat more, you know, ground covered type of, uh, you know, settings, not just lawn settings. And I, the monument is still very, very visible. And I think, uh, I also felt that, given the discussion about the pathway, that that probably is the best solution. I, I think having a broader pathway would not be advisable. And, uh, it sounds like they really explored what is possible uh, to try to minimize, uh, the, uh, length of pathway, which is also an issue, obviously, with, with the accessibility. Okay, so, uh, the one thing that kind, and, you know, there was also the need to protect that major tree, which, um, which I can appreciate. I think the main issue I still have is kind of that staircase, which is not absolutely necessary, but understood. The point about, you know, being able to get, if you have a narrow pathway, you've got a wheelchair there, being able to get, get off somehow and get out of them. I think I would feel better if they could move it somewhat to the northeast because then it would, uh, less interrupt and the lawn and they could have a more, a more, uh, you know, the sweep that's there now, the sort of curved sweep could, could continue for a while. So if it could be moved back closer to the tree or something and be less obvious as you approach from that other side, which you, you're gonna approach either right front or, I guess it's the south, well, the southern, the other southern entrance there. So that would be my one suggestion, but I think in general, you know, it's, it's, you know, they've given it a lot of thought and it's, it's really gonna be very necessary and important improvement. So I, I can support it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Not a minute too soon, this renovation. It's great that the city is offered money for this. It's, it's, it's long overdue, as anybody in the neighborhood knows. So it's an absolutely stunning construction that has not weathered well. And I think this is an exemplary, uh, proposal. Really skillful, really sensitive, um, comments. I think that they can work with staff on the railings. If, I don't think that, um, they necessarily have to go to a overt historic Australian, but it should be minimal and non-distracted because there is an awful lot of it. If, and if there were a precedent to be found that were more, uh, was more, um, consonant with the, the style of, of the structure, I think that'd be fine too. And I don't think that the argument that it's common to the park is necessarily relevant. I think that the, the, the monument is not common to the park. The monument is weird and stands out in a good way. So the railing should, should work with it, not necessarily with the park. I think that the extension of the, of the main stair that's on access with, uh, 89th Street is, is, uh, well done. I think the staff should, should look at the paving pattern here to make sure that it is, uh, appropriate and... appropriate and not distracting or calling attention to itself. It does do what it should do, which is to distinguish itself as a new element while maintaining this material of the original. I think that the the little ADA, you know, the one and 12 ramp that follows the shape of the curve. Now, what's interesting about this, and the one thing that I do have a concern about is the relation, Arvarado mentioned it as well. The relationship of the structure to the ground. Right? It was designed in a certain way and they went to some great difficulty to raise the structure from the plane of the earth with a variety of stone details. And that kind of, the way that the building meets the ground has modified here in a significant way, not necessarily in an inappropriate way. But I think that to the degree that one could maintain a sense of consistency and fealty to the original intent while meeting the ADA goals, I think would be good. And specifically, what I'm referring to is like, could you make that ramp extend, you know, like you have the first walkway, new walkway, less than 5% abuts the masonry. Then the ramp steps away from the masonry and makes like a little green space. Maybe it would be more consistent and have that ramp extend over to the balustrade and expose the, you know, the connection there. That would be a hard connection so that it was consistent with what you started with. Similarly, where the, where the pathway kind of goes into this winding pattern, which I think is totally appropriate. I think that that corner of the square within the circle that has kind of been burned up, they should work with the staff to minimize the degree to which that corner's lower extremities of masonry are covered. And they might look at landscaping that was, while meeting their environmental and kind of pathway deterrent goals, remained low and was, you know, would facilitate the visibility of the stone base and then the rubble, the rough stone foundation below it to the extent possible. I think that people's discomfort with that new stair is interesting to me. I think that it is a very strong, I think it will be a very strong element in the landscape. I think it will draw people to it because when you come down 89th Street, for sure, it's right on axis and you'll catch it. And it's on axis with the with the modules of the monument itself, as was intended and with that new entrance, which is celebrated by, you know, creating that gap. So I think it is a very strong thing. And I think Diana's idea is not a bad one. But I think you could also leave it and maybe celebrate it a little more. Maybe take the cannonballs and put them in that apps like they were already in a little app. So that you're caught by the cannonballs as you approach and you can maybe repurpose some of that stonework that cradled the cannonballs before. I don't know. But I mean, something that would recognize the kind of axiality of it and then kind of stop your progress without doing anything too structural, I think would be another alternate to what Diana said. I think the stuff that's going on at the pergola is wonderful. I don't have any concerns about that at all. I think that the lighting should be looked at when that becomes available.
All right. Commissioner Chen?
Just to follow up Commissioner Goldblum's comment, I think, you know, it's long overdue. And we were just having a town forum last night about the Kim La Memorial, which is the only structure for the Chinese-American who pay the ultimate sacrifice. And both structures shows the same thing, which is that it takes decades before there's any funding. So kudos to the team that you're finally getting some kind of, my one comment is about, I was thinking historically, the lower terrace that brick paving material, I'm concerned about the next funding cycle. And we all know how those bricks may not last as long as durable. So I will encourage the team to take a look whether there's any alternative, more durable material, just in case the next phase of funding. But I think overall, yeah, until Michael mentioned the staircase, I wasn't thinking about the entrance on the 89th Street. It does, it is interesting to have the landscaping stair. So I would defer to the rest of the commission to see how they feel about that stair. But overall, I think it's long overdue and I think we can't wait to see this thing be properly restored.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsberg?
Yep, just sent to turn on my mic. I think this is a complicated problem with a really good solution. And address a few comments, but I basically think it's fine as is. I think that the stair that goes up to the winding accessible path makes that accessible path not seem like an afterthought, but for both disabled and people who can walk up a stair. I think the simple handrail being proposed is appropriate. And since there is no historic idea of what was there, doing something simple and modern is the way to go. And we could discuss the exact location of the path, but I think providing accessibility particularly for disabled veterans is key. And I realize it has some impact on the site design and less of the walls of the, of the platforms will be exposed, but I think that is a necessary and reasonable compromise. So I find this totally appropriate.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
So I, I also want to compliment the applicant for not only making a fantastic presentation and being so thorough and really helping us to understand your thinking behind everything. But also for your, all of the thought that you put into this because it is complicated. And in a way, I I think you made it, you solved it in a very wonderful way that is, seems as simple as it could possibly be for a very difficult goal, I mean, challenge. And I just sort of can't believe how well that the access, you know, I think Mark mentioned, everyone mentioned it really, just the way the, the access path not only, it just wraps around in such a wonderful, easy soft touch wave, somebody said, and it's way it intersects with the steps is kind of brilliant. And I'm actually not having a problem with anything. I defer to my my fellow commissioners on some of the details, but I think, you know, this is a I don't think any of these things detract from the monument. The monument is monumental. And its presence is felt, whether you see the, you know, sort of the bottom, the very bottom that is currently hitting the the lawn or, or not. And I think the, you know, the plantings are very smart and make sense in terms of sustainability and how, you know, how this is going to be cared for. The paving looks great. I, you know, I could, you know, recommend that we support it as is, but I'm completely open to everyone's thoughtful comments. And I love what you did with the cannonballs. I think it just opens up I think more possibilities for interaction and for questions and for, I think it, it's really, it works very well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I share Commissioner Lutfi's enthusiasm for this. I think that not only was the presentation very well done in terms of, I can tell that you went through a lot of trouble in laying things out to explain things to us, including the grade changes and et cetera. But I think even the plan that you have for the barrier-free access, I felt like you spent a lot of time and effort into planning it in a way that works with the landscape without doing too much in terms of ramps and handrails and et cetera. So I can actually approve it as is. I think there are very nice touches. The staircase, I think we should consider what Commissioner Chapin said. However, you know, I'm fine with it where it is as well. The handrail, I appreciate what you said about keeping it simple and not overthinking it or adding other elements that might distract from the monument itself. But overall, I think it's fantastic.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I think it's an incredibly well-worked out project. And the design decisions of using the landscaping to create the ramps make total sense. The only two issues I have is one that it's a landmark that was classically designed. And by that means it had a base, you know, middle and the top. And the planting, in a way, if it dissolved the base, changes it too much for me. And if you, if they could go back and show more of that base, more of that, not the planting, the base, the wall, it would be better off. The second issue that I'm concerned about is the color of the plant material. Because part of this report, there was a whole section that showed project in Detroit that showed total planting. It looked like Mexico. And you have to be very careful with this classical approach to keep it, keep the ground plain, simple. And the monument is the dominant thing. And that's what we want to see, not
Okay.
The plant material.
Great, thank you. Okay, so
I just throw in a PS for what Wellington said. The issue of maintenance on those brick pavers is a very, very, very important thing. And I might suggest that whatever, I think about Columbia, which is full of that stuff. And I think that the best, the best way that they could set it in such a way that the crews, the maintenance crews could handle it be a sand, a sand setting, if that wasn't what they were considering, you know, instead of a cement setting, so that it could be done on a regular basis and you do it in one little spot, you fix it, send a crew out. It's a great point about that. And it's not necessarily relevant to, you know, our deliberations, but it's a good point.
Okay.
Sarah, Sarah?
Yes.
I just wanted to add, because I didn't mention the railing, that I do think the railing should just be as minimal as possible. And I actually think that this goes in that direction, definitely. I don't think it should be elaborate unless there's some historic precedent, then I don't think there is, so.
Okay. All right. So I think, let me go ahead. This is an advisory report, so I'm going to fold some of our recommendations into the motion. So let me go ahead and and do that. All right. So in the matter of docket number 24-010137, Soldiers and Sailors Monument Riverside Park, Soldiers and Sailors Monument Scenic Landmark, a monument designed by Charles W. and Arthur A. Stoughton and Paul E. M. Dubois and built in 1900 to 1902 within an English Romantic-style park built in 1873 to 75 and designed by Frederick Law Olmsted, with modifications and additions to the park built in 1934 to 37 and designed by Clifton Lloyd and Gilmore Clark. This is an application to modify balustrades, install pathways, stairs and railings, remove curbing, relocate cannonballs and regrade the site. I recommend that a favorable report be issued. That the proposed work will help improve barrier-free access and safety without eliminating any significant architectural features of the scenic landmark. That the removal of portions of the balustrades, which replaced the original marble balustrades in the mid 20th century, will not eliminate the original materials of the monument or the presence of decorative balustrades throughout the remainder of the monument. That the removal of select balustrade sections, shifting of the historic stair and placement of new pathways will facilitate the creation of barrier-free access paths which approximately align with the primary historic approach path. That the stair to be shifted will maintain its size, material and alignment with the monument. That the materials placement and simple detailing of the new pathways, steps and handrails will have a harmonious secondary presence which will not detract from the prominence and formality of the monument's design. That the placement and footprint of the proposed pathways and new stair will correspond to the existing topography and avoid disturbances to existing mature trees at the site. That the reading will not significantly, that the regrading will not significantly change the sighting of the monument and will only conceal portions of the masonry at the eastern side of the base with sizable portions of the masonry base left visible at the western side. That the relocation of the cannonballs, which replaced a statue when the monument was built and removal of portions of the surrounding curbing will not detract from the monument or the surrounding landscape. That the materials and finishes of the proposed hardscape elements will be compatible with the historic materials and finish palette of the monument and surrounding parkland. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special historic and naturalistic character of the Soldiers and Sailors Monument Individual Landmark or the Riverside Park and Riverside Drive Scenic Landmark. However, as you continue to develop the proposal, we ask that you work with the staff to ensure that the railing design is minimal and does not distract and that the explore ways to maintain the relationship of the base to the grade through the planting and ground cover material while maintaining your sustainability goals in those plantings. And, and that work closely with the staff on the details for this setting for the brick pavers to ensure durability. And I think we had one commissioner who also recommended either, well, one commissioner who recommended studying the location of that stair while others supported its axial relationship to the entrance and thought that treatment around the stair could also be enhanced. So with that, Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll move to the next item.
Right, we're now going to return to public hearing item number one, LPC 24-10088. An application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, Block 154, Lot 71, 3928 46th Street in the Sunnyside Gardens Historic District. This is a simplified colonial revival-style row house designed by Clarence Stein and Henry Wright and built in 1926. And the application is to modify a window opening.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Jared Knowles of the Preservation Staff. The application for you today, this afternoon, I'm actually presenting, and Richard Gensler is the architect. It's online if you have questions after I'm done. The site is located mid, it's 39-28 46th Street. It's located mid-block on the west side of 46th Street between Skillman and 39th Avenues. It's shown on the map here. Here are historic and current front facade photographs. The proposal is actually at the rear and is to enlarge a rear facade window that is not visible from public thoroughfare. Here are the existing rear facade photographs. The small bathroom window at the upper floor is a distinctive fenestration pattern for this, for this district, which is the reason why it's coming forward.
It's not distinctive. It's that the rules don't allow the staff, don't authorize the staff to modify masonry openings at the top floor of the backs of buildings.
It's not distinctive. It's that the rules don't allow the staff, don't authorize the staff to modify masonry openings at the top floor, the backs of buildings.
Now, this isn't, this isn't visible from public view, no.
Here are the existing proposed rear elevations. And. Here are some other photos of the rear facades with enlarged openings. Most were probably enlarged prior to the designation of the district. Tuition, however, did recently approve enlarging a similar bathroom window at thirty nine dash eighty four forty sixth street. And then finally, here are the existing and proposed floor plans.
The rear elevation.
Sure.
So it's just enlarging a non-visible window at the top floor. Okay, any questions? All right, let's see if there's any. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? All right, not seeing anyone. I'll turn it over to Gregory Collet to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. I do not see any remote participants with their hands raised for this item. So I will note for the record that Queens Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does the applicant wish to say anything or is he?
No, I just wanted to note that we presented actually a very similar project to this a year and a half ago. Asking for the same thing on another building just down the block from this. And at that time, that was, that project was approved and I'm hoping that we also can get this.
Okay, we can't hear you very well, but I think he said that they submitted, they proposed something similar on another building and the commission approved it. Okay. All right, so let's close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. And so this is, as I said, a non-visible rear facade in Sunnyside Gardens. And the proposal is to enlarge a bathroom window to match the other windows on the floor. Which matches the condition on the adjacent building as well as other buildings in the district which have been, which have had their windows altered. Either prior to designation or with commission approval. And, and this is really before us today. While it's not removing any significant features, it's before us today really because of a technicality in the rules where the staff is not authorized to approve. Modifying window openings on the top floor. And that rule, I think, was really written with row houses, sort of brownstone row houses in mind where you have a continuous pattern. And so if, as we think about this district and if we think that the site conditions are different here. It may be an opportunity to signal to the staff that this could be done in the future at staff level. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen?
This is a no brainer. Why didn't they do it in the first place? Regardless of technicality. It is more appropriate to, if you look at the elevation, that this is about time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree, totally appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
And do you think it would be a good idea for staff to handle this in the future?
Great, thank you. Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
Okay, does anyone else have any other opinion? No, and any other thoughts on allowing the staff to continue?
I absolutely think staff should be allowed to approve. I think this is the kind of thing that when we had apposition of landmarking the district that people worried about. That it'd be very complicated to get a window approved and. Rear facade not visible, minor alterations, similar Trinity St. House is very much a no brainer. So. You know, unlike major changes we see in other districts. So I would be very much in favor of letting the staff approve this kind of change.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go ahead and make the motion. Commissioner Chen, would you read the motion?
In the matter of LPC twenty four dash one zero zero eight eight, thirty nine twenty eight forty sixth street, Sunnyside Gardens Historic District. The application is to modify a window opening. Noting the building's style, scale, materials and details. Among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Sunnyside Gardens Historic District, I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. That the modified window opening at the rear facade will not be visible from any public thoroughfare. That the expanded window opening will match the size and shape of the adjacent window opening. And the resulting fenestration pattern will match the existing fenestration of the house adjoining neighbor. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural and all historic character of the historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next and final item.
Right, and that is public hearing item number two. LPC twenty four dash zero eight six seven seven. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block seven seventeen, lot forty five. Four oh two West Twentieth Street in the Chelsea Historic District. This is a neo-colonial style apartment building designed by CPH Gilbert and built in eighteen ninety seven. And the application is to install a gate.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Gilman from Gilman Architects.
Sorry, just finding the file. Give me one minute. Okay. You just need to click on the screen to advance the slides.
Good afternoon. Tom Gilman from Gilman Architects. I'm here to present security upgrades for four oh two West Twentieth Street here in the city. The project is in the Chelsea Historic District on West Twentieth Street between Ninth and Tenth Avenues, close to Ninth. You can see in the outlined gray rectangle. We're very close to Ninth Avenue with a hundred feet of it. You can also see from this picture, the satellite image, that the corner property, one sixty nine Ninth Avenue has a restaurant. And they have a sidewalk restaurant that goes right up to our property, which is active with people at various times of the day. The building was constructed in eighteen ninety seven. It's five floors, five apartments. It is distinct. It is not part of any row house configuration with other buildings. This is a view of the stoop that we're here to talk about. This photo is helpful because what we call a stoop, it's obviously more horizontal than it is a typical vertical stoop. Closer horizontal than vertical. It has two low steps, a broad flat area, then three low steps and then another broad flat area. There's a view from the front. Okay, and just to give the context, to the right or the west hand side, we have a stretch of almost seven hundred feet of metal gates. We have eighteen, it goes all the way down to Tenth Avenue. We have eighteen properties that have a very similar gate in front of their door that we're proposing. On the other side, the left or the east side is one sixty nine Ninth Avenue, and they actually share the same historic wrought iron fence. They were both developed by the Cushman family. It's the same Cushman and Cushman roads, you know. This is the nineteen forty tax photo, full image on the left and a close up on the right. What we're doing here is looking at the original condition. The entrance had a series, a pair of low walls on either side. With piers in the front with the street and caps that lined up with the existing limestone cap that still is there in the building. There was work done prior to nineteen eighty four that removed those low walls and put up these high six foot, nonhistoric metal gates. There was a, sorry, there was a violation issued for this in nineteen eighty four. Previous owner did not address it. The new current owner is doing renovation of the building. And we're, we have addressed this as well. This is the existing condition that's on the left, and this is the approved landmarks, landmarked approved renovation on the right, and this work is underway. Just to note, we did go ahead with the limestone piers on both sides as well as limestone caps. We didn't do cast stone. And we're doing new blue stone on the top as well. We're very happy about the direction this is taking. Of course, what this does is it creates a very wide opening on a very low, almost horizontal entrance here. And as you can see in the side, the existing gates, you can see what they did before for protection. And on the right, we now have these really good low walls for hanging out on and sitting on. In fact, residents have walked by and said, oh, when I was a kid, I used to hang out, sitting on these steps as well. So we're trying to, you know, obviously restore the building but address the security concerns that are very real. So what we're proposing to do is put in a gate and match the existing historic gate, which is on our property up here on the side. The full view. Just to call out the gate on the left or the east side has a matching wrought iron gate as well. And there's also, if you see at the top of the steps, there's a precedent for that gate being two rises higher. And on the right is four oh four West Twentieth. Here's a close up of that, of that gate detail, or two bays of that gate. And it has these very nice wrought iron details throughout. Show you some details. On the upper left, we have a finial, a leaf finial with a hundred and eighty degree twist with two symmetrical C scrolls on either side. Top and bottom of each, between each of the pickets, we have asymmetrical C scrolls with a kind of S. Serpentine pattern on both sides, hammered to a point, feathered in between. We have a circular six inch ring in the middle and it's all bolt connected. These are all details that we intend to fully follow. This is the proposed gate between those two piers. The existing gate again is on the left in a piece there. And on the right, sorry, in the middle section, we're posing two fixed panels and one operable door in the middle for the gate. It has to be up two steps because it has to swing in and can't swing out onto the sidewalk. And those two steps are very close. So we're following the precedent of the adjacent property to the left. There's some details of that. These are, this is a map of nearby properties with approved stoop gates. As we know, right across the street, four seventeen, four nineteen and four twenty one West Twentieth Street have metal gates in a very similar situation that were approved by landmarks and installed. And we also cited five properties that are nearby in the village. Again, just right across the street, these are the three, four seventeen, four nineteen and four twenty one West Twentieth Street, all landmark approved. Gates that went in in a very similar way. These are five properties in the village as well. Christopher, you can see the addresses. And again, this is where we've been on the left with the existing, this non-conforming cut up condition. And where we're looking to land on the right with the restored piers, low walls, and a security gate to keep the tenants safe in this neighborhood. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right. Okay, so let's, yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
When was this building built?
This building was built in eighteen ninety seven.
Eighteen.
Eighteen ninety seven, yep. Okay. All right, so I don't see any questions. I'll note that there is no one in the room to speak on this item, but we'll turn it to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. If you'd like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. We have a few remote participants with their hand raised. The first we'll be hearing from is Dave Haloka from Manhattan Community Board Four. Dave Haloka, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And once you rejoin as a panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
I am David Haloka, a member of Community Board Four, reading from our advisory letter. The board found the proposed gate an unnecessary disruption of a masterful, open and welcoming entrance designed by CPH Gilbert. A notable architect of many New York landmarks. The security is not a particular problem in the neighborhood. That gated entrances to New York City apartment buildings are virtually unheard of. And that the proposal would contribute to an urban version of a gated community. Distracting from the spirit of one of the city's most gracious blocks. The concavity of the Donac apartment building's entrance corner lends it an inviting and embracing quality. The masonry sidewalls of the entrance were clearly intended to terminate the building's original areaway fence and emphasize the open building entrance. The presentation to CB four said the proposed gate will be part of a continuous set of such gates on the block that extends for more than six hundred feet over more than two dozen buildings. The eight hundred foot block front, in fact, as noted by the presenter, has only eighteen buildings with gates, the great majority of which are Greek Revival row houses. For which gates matching and continuous with front garden fences are thematic. Interspersed among these are six townhouses without gates and five other apartment buildings, none of which has a gate. Nearby apartment buildings by CPH Gilbert do not have gates and New York City apartment buildings do not as a rule have entrance gates. All of the gate precedents shown in the applicant's proposal material are for what were built as townhouses in the early to mid nineteenth century. When installation of row house gates across the street at numbers four seventeen, nineteen and twenty one was presented in a twenty twenty two LPC public hearing. Neighbors testified that homelessness and security were not a particular problem on the heavily trafficked block. The chair responded, we don't make our findings based on need. We look at the architectural appropriateness of the physical work. The commission then voted to approve the new gates. To believe that its findings weren't based on the applicant's claimed need for security is to believe that LPC acted solely to improve on notable original architect Charles Coolidge Hates work. A clearly inappropriate action. Security is no more a problem on the block today than then. The area is a world away from the nineteen eighties when the current fortress-like fence and gate were illegally installed. Recent years have seen an increase in gentrification and attendant property protection measures, not homelessness or crime. The applicant told CB four that the gate was for basic security so that people aren't kind of wandering into the front door of the building. This concern calls for a standard apartment intercom buzzer system, not a reworking of CPH Gilbert's exceptional entrance design. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Pamela Wolf from Save Chelsea. Pamela Wolf, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, commissioners. I am Pamela Wolf, a board member and past president, speaking on behalf of Save Chelsea, as well as from my own personal experience. We strongly oppose the proposed new gate at four oh two West Twentieth Street, the Donac apartment building. We welcome removal of the current entrance fencing and gate that were installed. Without a required LPC permit and urge the commission not to approve a replacement. This would keep the building in character with the, with the original condition of nearly every other purpose-built apartment building in the city. Including the one hundred foot long group of three that stand just down the block to the Donacs West. Together, these buildings provide a consistent context of apartment buildings from the same era. With areaway fences that end in the cheek walls of front steps framing a gateless, invitingly open path from sidewalk to front door. For many years, I was a resident manager of a nearby pair of side by side apartment buildings. At two twenty three and two thirty one West Twenty First Street. They were completed in eighteen ninety nine, two years after the Donac, and have a similar entrance configuration of areaway fences. Interrupted by the sidewalls of entry steps. These buildings have never had gates and security has never been an issue. I am very familiar with the four hundred block of West Twentieth Street, often visiting friends there over the years, including. Throughout the nineteen eighties, an era in which New York had a much higher crime rate. The current non-conforming gate. The current non-conforming gate was installed in those years by a previous owner, the previous owner who was a friend. Neither I nor, nor other Save Chelsea members have seen any cause for heightened security on the block. It is one of the city's most gracious and should be spared fortification. That recalls the days of New York's most threatening public image. The Donak is an elegantly contextual work by notable architect CPH Gilbert. Commissioned by the Kushman family that was instrumental in Chelsea's founding and development. Gilbert's gracious entrance design is particularly remarkable and should not be marred. If the commission were to approve a gate at this location. It would introduce a precedent that other building owners could cite. Potentially unleashing a rash of similar, similarly unnecessary expressions of exclusion. The unsightly existing gate should be fully removed. Replacing it with a smaller one would be an inadequate half measure. The commission should compare the proposal, not to the even worse current condition. But to the pristine and welcoming entrance CPH Gilbert designed. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we will be hearing from John Graham from the Victorian Society in New York. John Graham, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And once you are a panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The Victorian Society was very pleased to see that an LPC permit has been issued for exterior work. Which includes the removal of the modern stoop gate installed without permits. However, the removal of an illegal gate shouldn't be rewarded with a permit to install a new gate. We appreciate that the applicants have made a sincere effort to produce a good design. We don't feel that any gate is an acceptable response to this distinguished building. At four oh nine, CPH Gilbert designed an unusually gracious entrance. It had, before that illegal gate was installed, a very welcoming appearance. While the adjacent nineteenth century row houses have high stoops which rise above the sidewalk. The entrance sequence at four oh nine begins with a couple of low risers leading to a broad intermediate terrace. Three more steps then rise to wide doors set at an angle to the street. All of this was significantly diminished by the installation of that illegal gate in nineteen eighty-four. We ask that it not be legally diminished by the installation of a second stoop gate in twenty twenty-four. The Victorian Society has testified against stoop gates at three other buildings on this block. We do so again at four oh nine West twentieth street. Thank you commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any further hands raised, so I will bring it back to you Chair Carroll.
Thank you very much. Would you like to respond to any of the comments?
First of all, we are making extensive efforts to renovate the building in historically sensitive manner. We've worked very carefully with LPC staff to do so. In terms of there not being crime or significant problems on the street, I've been there as an architect during construction for several years now. And it is a real problem. Simply put, it's a scary situation with people wandering in in different places. This is a broad open space and the residents need to feel safe when they approach their home and not feel like they have to walk through this gauntlet. The request is modest. It's a three foot gate. It matches what's existing. It matches what's on both sides of this extensively. I think it's a very reasonable and modest proposal to make. Further characterizing this as an apartment building, it's five apartments. It's not fifteen or twenty or, or thirty like the others around here. It's, this is five stories. The one next to it is four, as are all the others running down the block for quite some time. It's a, it's a slightly taller townhouse. That's all it is and we want to make this safe. There's never going to be a doorman for five apartments or anything like that. We just want to make this, you know, we want to finish this renovation, obviously finish it up in a nice way. And we want to make it safe for the people who are there.
Thank you commissioners, any final questions? Okay, let's move to close our hearing and begin the discussion. All right, Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close?
Just removed.
Thank you, Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And this is, you know, it's always, I think, challenging when we think about gates on stoops and the historic relationship that stoops had to the sidewalk. But it is also one of those areas that, where people's perceptions evolve over time. And we have seen a number of applications to put a, a gate at the bottom step of a stoop. And in some cases, in recent years, we have approved that, those installations. Largely when they are a one-off row house and not part of a continuous row where you read a whole continuous line of steep stoops. Particularly if they are on a mixed block where there are other building typologies and commercial buildings as well. And, and also when the stoop condition has been different and is not a traditional steep slope, steep stoop. So for example, on the Upper East Side, we've approved gates at the bottom of the entries, low entries of Bozart's townhouses. And in this particular district, we've also approved them on this block. The applicant showed the row houses directly across the street that are part of the general theological seminary, which have also low. Step entry conditions and we found that the, a stoop, a gate at those entrances to be appropriate because of that sighting condition. And so we've, we've sort of analyzed this block before. And I think we can think about the stoop and building typologies as we have our discussion today. Commissioner Luffey, would you like to start this one?
Sure. So I do want to say that. It is really commendable that the work that's being done to. You know, fix up the building entryway and. Bring it back to a condition that's more appropriate in terms of. The architecture of this building and the sort of the, the lovely design. And the existing fence, I can't even believe it when I think about it. It in and of itself is like menacing. And I am so, you don't see it when you look at this rendering, but when I look at the photo. With the, with the, with the fence closed, it's a, it's kind of horrifying. So I, I'm so relieved and heartened. That that as part of this renovation, that fence is going to disappear. And before you do anything, it will have made a dramatic change. Now, the, the fence, I, I, I do want to also say that I happen to also know that this. Building has five units in it. It is not a, an apartment building. It's just a unusually shaped. Building that sits next to a bunch of. Town, other townhouses and it just, it looks a little different and it, it will never have a doorman. And, you know, maybe it will have a buzzer in it. I don't know what it has right now, but. I, we have been seeing more requests for fences. In areas where. The applicants feel that there has been, you know, a lot of traffic where people are just wandering up to their stoops. And we have been approving them. It just so happens that the existing fence is beautiful. I mean, when I look at the details of it, it's like you, you want to spend time just gazing at it. Because there's so many different interesting shapes and they, you know, are. You know, they're attractive in, in many ways and it's kind of an uplifting design. The, so I appreciate that the applicant. Wants to continue that fence and is doing it at a height that is really not obtrusive in any way. So I, I think this is a, a very positive effort and I could approve this.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a very modest proposal. I think the fence in terms of the height and the design matches what's existing. And there's a lot of other gates and fences on this street, so I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson.
The original did not have a gate. Restoration did not have a gate. And this gate doesn't do anything but the facade and all. I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I, you know, as you reflected, for years we had a sort of a no stoop gates. It doesn't matter what kind of stoop gate. And having served on the commission almost two decades now. I was actually surprised by the level of opposition to this particular gate. And, and described as unwelcoming and distracting and so forth. It's, it was quite intense. It took me a little back, however. I, as we've been going through this, I think started developing a nuanced view of stoop gates. Because I, in situations where they're not part of a row. Not distracting from the facade in this particular case, this is very low and it's below the door. So you're not actually seeing it really affecting the facade in any way that I see. You know, it's affecting your view of the steps. But it's not affecting your view of the building, I don't think. Remarkable and wonderful as an example this building is. It's, it is nicely decorative. And I'm beginning to see some stoop gates as part of the legitimate layering. Layered development of buildings which with stoops, especially in mixed residential and commercial areas. Which we're seeing over time because one of the things we see at the commission is the evolution of buildings. Building facades change character sometimes. Doesn't mean we have to always approve what's proposed, obviously. And nor does it set a particular precedent for anything else. But. I actually don't think this particular stoop gate is objectionable. I think it, it is, can be appropriate in this particular situation.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goldblum.
I was just at this building like last week. And it's, it's always one of the most striking buildings when I see it. Because it's so unique, because it plays this very important, almost archetypal role in, in kind of the urban landscape. And the kind of the, the urban planning of, of a city block in Manhattan. And it reacts to that condition so remarkably well, so erudite, you know, it's, it's really just a great. Way to resolve an urban condition that is elegant and it's great, 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 great building by a very important architect. And furthermore, last week, I noted again with deep pain, how that fence that's there now is horrible. And really hurts the building. Furthermore, because the building is so diagonally oriented and because its facade is axial on a diagonal way. Which is how you see it when you come down the block. I, you know, the notion of blocking it with a fence that's orthogonal is kind of anathema. And I kind of lean towards what Everarda was saying, that this really doesn't belong here and it doesn't belong here. However. My fear is that if we say no to them, they're going to leave the one that's there. They're just going to fix it, which they're allowed to do, and it'll be up for another twenty-five years. So, and that's never a good excuse to approve something. So I'm kind of torn about this one and I, I don't really know how to vote. My, my, you know, my superego says no, but my worries are that this may be a case where we have to take. Better than what we have now. I'm not sure.
May I ask, Michael, with the cheek wall, with from the side, would you see this fence?
I think it'd be worse because because of the diagonal approach, you want to see across the yards into it. That's kind of the way it's meant to be seen, you know? You want to let that line of sight kind of go diagonally into that corner. And the cheek walls kind of make it, yeah, it kind of foils that attempt to see it.
Maybe if you're, as you're walking down, you wouldn't see it, but I don't know.
No, I, I mean, look, it's, it's a unique building. It's a, you know, for a modest building of modest in scale, modest in height. It's just a remarkably important little thing and I'd hate to see it get mucked up, but. It's great. I'm with you hundred percent and that's, and hence my concern. But I, I fear that if we said no, they'd go back, they'd fix it, they'd be allowed to keep it forever. So this might be a better move. I just, I'm not, I'm just not sure.
But the cheek walls are a restoration. It did have the cheek walls originally.
Okay.
Want to make sure that was clear. That's, so they, that they are restoring the cheek walls in stone, I believe, not even cast stone is what was presented.
Yet they're restoring it higher than what it was? It looks like it was down low at the height of the top of the stairs, at the height of the fence to the left.
Nina can help fill in.
Is that, is it being raised? And the post is obviously higher.
He's matching the historic height of the cheek walls.
And I guess if, if I were to approve it, I would, I would want it to be down at the level of the existing fence, a little bit lower if that were.
A little lower.
Possible. I, I think that would make it a little easier for me, but I'm still of two minds about it.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, you know, until Michael speaks, I was more in agreement with Diana and Commissioner Master and. But I, I, I think Michael's suggestion may be a good one, which is that indeed lowering the fence. The height of the fence slightly may help if at all. I mean, I leave it to.
Okay, I mean, they are matching the design of the areaway fence, so I don't know what that does to the proportions of the design.
Right, which is why another dilemma, which is that right now it is, is proportional to basically. The, the scale and proportion matches the existing fence, which is not, it's not obtrusive. It's like, you know.
It looks like it's maybe one step up, so maybe the staff could work to doing it's two steps up. So maybe we could put it down to the first step and that might make it align.
Yeah.
Oh, because you trip if you try to open it. Okay.
That was a concern. There'd be many, many steps, many, many fences that we thought would not work. We saw it like a couple weeks ago on live dates.
It was on the bottom step.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, speaking of Commissioner Ginsburg.
Well, I have to say, it's been hard to hear some people if they don't talk into the mic. So I haven't gotten all of the conversation. I'd first say what they're proposing is tremendously better than what's there now. I understand the concern of the gate and I'm somewhat torn about it. But I'm not sure, I, I don't think that the proportion should be changed. So I could, I could vote to accept this as appropriate.
Okay. All right, so I think where we are is in, we have six who could support it as is. Just, I think one doesn't support it and two are very torn and wondered if lowering it could be okay. But I think we've got the six, so we'll go ahead and make the motion. But we can also ask them to continue to work with the staff to see if there is a shifting down to the bottom step that would help. The, and, but also not look misaligned, like accidentally misaligned with the areaway fence. But for now, we'll just do an approval as it.
Okay.
No, that, because I think we have six as is, but we can encourage them to continue to think of that. Okay. In the matter of. Docket twenty-four dash zero eight six seven seven, four oh two West twentieth street, Chelsea Historic District. A neo-colonial style apartment building designed by CPH Gilbert and built in eighteen ninety-seven. The application is to install a gate. I note that the building's style.
I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Chelsea Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the building is located in close proximity to a commercial area and not part of a row, and therefore the presence of a gate will not detract from a uniform streetscape, that the installation of the gate assembly at the lo- large lower landing between taller masonry piers to be restored will be compatible with the composition and scale of the sta- stairs and entrance, that the gate assembly will match the existing historic area away fencing in terms of its material, design and finish, helping it to relate well to the design and style of the building and historic iron, ironwork. That the uh, oh wait, wait, alignment, an alignment thereby helping it to harmonize with the streetscape, and that the installation will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of the building or the historic district. And I would encourage the applicant to continue to work with staff on the details of the fa- of the gate.
Right, and Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Pardon? I'm sorry, she did aye?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With six in favor and two opposed, the motion passes.
So that's approved. Thank you. All right, and that is concludes our public hearing and public meeting for today, July, June eleventh, and we will see everyone next Tuesday, June eighteenth. Thank you.